Doing like a loop connection for second insurance or issues with obtaining an actual an access easement to get to the right of way. So that property fronts on Justin Drive sort of on the upper, the northern portion of the property where we have access. We just didn't have a, didn't have an access on in the second location and typically with VDOT if you're generating less than. Um, it's uh two thousand vehicles per day, then you're so the, I'm sorry, less than fifty lot, fifty lots is generally the cutoff. For, or even considering the second entrance. So with the twenty twenty two lots total, um. It kind of falls under that threshold as well, you know, in addition not having the, um, the access. If I answered that question.
You did, I was just thinking safety wise, you know, something happens and blocks the road and nobody can in and nobody could get out and everybody else is just sat there waiting.
They can do, I think in the technical review committee, didn't they ask y'all or something about whether was the right of way around that property or something that. I don't know whether it was, I think it was in, uh, in yours that I saw they did R O W, which were right away. And y'all could not find any right ways.
Correct, right, so on the backside where the, where the roads kind of coming down, there's no, there's no right way to connect to, so we only have the. We have the kind of location on the top half of the site to tie into the roadway.
Any other question?
In, in the design, is there any potential for a bot bolter like emergency access? Um, as a second name, is that possible?
Again, I think we have the issue with running up against the, to get an offset easement for that, so that.
Can you talk a little more about, um, how the connection when Aqua going to work and maybe Aqua will be needed for that? Yeah, I saw with the technical review committee asked for an eight inch line, eight inch line will give you sixteen hundred gallons of medic uh for, for firefighting.
Right.
To, um, based on the size of the homes, you're probably, I guess first question is the size of the homes.
Yeah, these are, they're, they're basically, I think they're sixteen, under two thousand square feet homes are not large, um.
She's probably talking under fifteen hundred gallons of minute required fire flow.
Well, with it, I guess with it, what we came up with was, um, with the separation of the sixteen foot separated is like seven hundred fifty gallons per minute. Um, or into the, the, um. I got the guy for needed fire flow and what we're working out with Aqua on, on the sketch plan, we actually showed a, a tank, a water tank on the site.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and we're still working on the details of that with them, which were the current and final engineering. But we know there's some to make up for the shortage, we're gonna have to provide some sort of, um. Uh, a tank or even perhaps, you know, make a, a loop connection at the end of Justin if we can. So there's a couple of things we're considering. I'm sorry. It's, it's eight, eight inch pipe, yeah, it's eight inch. Yeah.
Yeah, cause, cause the loop would improve everything, the Lord of everybody's.
Right, that's one of the options that may reduce the size of the tank, we potentially get rid of it, but we know we, we had those issues to address during the final engineering phase, so. Yeah, um.
You'd, um, have to calculate how many hydrants you're gonna need.
Uh, we have, well, when, in the technical review committee, we worked out, we'd have, they say hydrants every five hundred feet, so we'll have two new hydrants on the road. Um, the road, I think it's, it's not quite, I think it's around six hundred feet maybe, so we'll have, um, hydrant coverage basically for the, um. Add the courage for that with the two hydrants.
You know, I saw the technical review committee was asking for a hundred foot diameter coal was asked.
Yes. And those are drawn in there, they have a hundred foot diameter.
He has a post, thank you. Does he need no other questions? Do I have a motion about this?
I know, that's the planning commission except, um. So twenty four, twenty nine, right end of them, the sketch plan. Requests for rural cluster major subdivision with respect to seventy six point seven one acres. Of tax map eighteen, section one, parcel one, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kilpatrick, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Shiflett, all in favor say aye. Chair votes aye, five, six, four, it is true, accepted. The next item is S U B twenty four thirty two, Reventon by Marcella Lago. LLC sixty seven lots on two hundred and five acres in Cunningham District.
And this is another rural cluster subdivision presented for planning commission consideration. Approximately two hundred and five acres covering three parcels, uh, twenty six A A two. Twenty six A A five A and twenty six A A thirty eight. Uh, what's proposed here is a sixty seven lot rural cluster subdivision accessed. At the moment from Route six twenty Rolling Road, uh, property owned by Mer, uh, Mercy Lago LLC, hope I didn't butcher the name. Uh, properties are zone one, eight agricultural general, and it's in the county's rural preservation area. And the star here shows where the proximal location of this proposed subdivision. Just a little northeast of Scottsville along the Albemarle County line. And then here are the parcels in question. Uh, now my understanding and the developer at these here can correct me if this is wrong. Uh, but my understanding is that there's a, a boundary line adjustment plan which would bring these parcels. Uh, fully within Savannah County, but I'll let the developer speak to that. So the developer provided some numbers, um, sixty seven rural cluster lots will cover a total of approximately thirty four point eight acres. Uh, hundred sixty four point three acres of open space. Approximately five point nine acres within right of way. And approx, a little more than half an acre in repair and buffer not suited for development. Uh, I mentioned the, the, the entrance on Route six twenty, uh, VDOT requires two entrances, um. The developer did amend the sketch plan to, uh, include a stub out that extends into Albemarle County. But I would note that VDOT has not given their blessing on that, so, uh, that still needs to be resolved. Now here's your sketch plan and, no, can we see, I can't see my arrow cursor on the, on the, um. On the screen, but, uh, six twenties on the right side or east side of the sketch. And then you have the two roads and the one that comes all the way out to the west, that's where your stub out is. And there are sixty seven lots. Uh, yield plan was presented, uh, and, uh, I'll, I'll talk more about the yield plan in a minute, but they. The developer did show, presented your plan showing that sixty seven parcels could be, uh, gleaned from that, uh, from those, you, those, uh, properties. And again, the, the, uh, under A one, it's the once a single family dwelling unit per two acres with state maintained roads. This is the yield plan that was presented. And also I'll mention, um, down on the south side is, uh, that's Briary Creek Road. Uh, just for everyone's reference. So the technical review committee did look at this, they had a few comments, uh. VDOT did review this separately and the recommended sketch plan conditions you see here, the, um. First three. Uh, came from the technical review committee, actually the first four came from the technical review committee. Uh, that's no more than sixty seven residential lots, uh, VDOT still needs to do with the soil analysis. Uh, cul-de-sacs hundred foot diameter that came from the fire, uh, rescue, uh, personnel, um. Uh, warm war ponds available for firefighting apparatus, I understand from the developer, there is at least one of the ponds on the property that has. Uh, road access already, uh, soil testing and well testing. Uh, conditions five through twelve really are based on our conversations with VDOT. Uh, and these are things VDOT would have to sign off on before we would approve any preliminary or final plaits. Uh, meaning secondary deceptive street requirements, uh, VDOT still needs to see roadway classification and average daily traffic data. I think you need to see geometric design standards, uh, they'll, of course, the proposed designs will need to meet their standards. Uh, they want to see a turn lane warrant analysis, uh, they'll want to see trip generation. Now, uh, number eleven, VDOT is, is advising that, uh, proposed roadway shown is shown in wetlands, which will mean D E Q needs to. Give their blessing, I think there's a little bit of a disagreement on whether that's actually the case, but that's what VDOT is telling us. And then the radiuses will need to be VDOT standards and of course the last condition is, uh. If the preliminary final subdivision plaits would need to be approved. Uh, now I believe the developer was here and he's here to answer any questions and add any context to what I just presented.
Good evening, I'm, uh, Brian Ray with Roger Ray and Associates, we prepared the plans, um. So just going through some of that and they see that most of our comments were from VDOT, which. It was kind of odd how, and I think, uh, Todd, uh, referred to it in his, uh, comments or in the staff report. That, um, you know, when we had technical review committee meeting, we hadn't received any VDOT comments. Um, the day after that, we did receive one comment from VDOT about the two entrances, which actually is. It's kind of deceiving, it's not really two entrances that are required, VDOT's, it's two connections that are required. So if you look at their SSAR regulations, it requires that you have suppose like an entrance. Either two entrances or that you provide a connector to an adjoining property that may be further divided later. So it's really about interconnectivity, it's not really that you have to have two separate entrances for, for the plant. We did respond to VDOT, uh, within days of getting those comments back, you know, just kind of trying to confirm that our. Stub out that we show on our plan to the adjoining properties will be sufficient. And as of today, I guess we still haven't heard anything back from that comment. And then on, I believe, September fourth, when all of the, the staff report has to be, I guess, everything has to be filed. We got this second set of VDOT comments from a different reviewer. So we really haven't, I did reply to that immediately with my responses, but again, we haven't heard anything else from VDOT about it. But luckily, all of those items are final design items, not really things that are affecting what we're trying to. Show on our sketch plan, you know, we're gonna still have to go through all of VDOT's, uh, plan approval process. And we'll work through any, uh, you know, any questions that are arise from that. But I did want to say on, on number eleven that, uh, Todd had referred to, um. VDOT's, one of their comments was that we showed a roadway and wetlands, but we don't show that on either plan, um. And I don't know, I think we should at least modify that if, if you're all willing to, to say if. A row, proposed roadway is shown in wetlands, because I think clearly our plan doesn't show, um. Wetlands, a road proposed in wetlands or even near that. Um, and I have highlighted wetlands on a couple of copies of the sketch plan and yield plan, if you all want to take a look at that. Just to confirm that before making any decision about that change. Uh, but otherwise, all the other comments are things we've either addressed already or will be addressed during, um, final design of. Uh, not only drain fields, well locations, of course, all the information with VDOT. Um, so we really don't see anything here that's a hurdle for us to, you know, to overcome. And, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions or, um, owners representative here is also, uh, if we need to. You know, anything outside of the technical part of what we're looking at.
Did the health department have some questions also about?
The health department said, said we need to have, of course, um, approval for our drain fields and wells, which is our next step as soon as we. Are through our sketch plan process, the next step is for us to do soil testing. Uh, with an A O S E, who will provide that and we will be acquiring, uh, Virginia Department of Health. Approval on all the drain fields and well locations before submitting preliminary plan.
On the sketch plan also, I saw something about one thing with label public road. Does that mean that that would, roads could be used by all the public? And could be used to go from the Savannah County property over into Albemarle County?
Yes, that's exactly what I was speaking to at first about VDOT and their interconnectivity. So they want VDOT, actually our first drawing did not have the cul-de-sac going all the way to the boundary line. Um, but with VDOT's required two connections, what they want is that you don't have a lot of different separate entrances. If you, or at least if you have to go from one place to the other, you have some interconnectivity, so that was the whole purpose for extending that. Um, road to the boundary line.
Okay, also I saw it that, uh, there was a new owner, is it really a, a new applicant or really a new owner?
I think.
Had this property been owned by the same person the whole time?
I think, uh, the new, the person that owns it now has owned it for quite a few years.
But it says in their package, new owner, but I verify three of this property because they came before us before and they. A lot of people think they misled us, uh, when they were doing that before, so that's why I'm asking a lot of questions about this, because I'm very concerned. Uh, what I see.
And I agree because, um, this is the same piece of property. That they were gonna put the campground on and we had a lot of concerns about the roads itself. And couldn't even handle the campground and now you're putting all these homes. Are those roads sufficient enough to handle the amount of traffic that's gonna be there based on the amount of homes you're trying to put there? And I think it's very important that we rely on VDOT. And what VDOT comes up with before we make a decision on this, because if the roads can't handle it. Then I don't see how the subdivision can be developed.
And that will be the case, they will be, you know. And that will be the case, they will be, you know, again, before preliminary plat approval, we'll have VDOT approval.
But I would like to see that before we, I would prefer to defer this request until we see what VDOT, BDH and DEQ has to say about this. Because we had other issues the last time that the previous, I guess, the previous property owner tried to put the campground down and all the issues we saw there, fire, rescue, all that good stuff, how much, um, but a burden you're putting on the services here in Pluvana to handle that, do we have enough there, fire, rescue, police, whatever, so I would like to see a little more information from VDOT, BDH and DEQ.
Did VDOT talk about a traffic study?
It says traffic study, yes, which is, which is common with any development. Cause basically we'll have to, and really it's based on the number of lots. Uh, VDOT considers, uh, each lot to be ten vehicle trips per day. So, you know, there's a breakdown depending on that and then you'll, a part of what, uh, they request is to analyze like the turn lanes, necesser- necessary and such, so you look at not only the volume of traffic that the subdivision will create, but also the volume of traffic that travels on the road. And again, all that's part of the approval process for, uh, Department of Health and for VDOT, which I believe, you know, are, aren't requirements until we actually submit preliminary plat.
Is the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is a reason for this public road, the fact that Almaral County approved that campground on the Almaral side of the, of this and y'all will be able to use that to, to access this? And will that be able to, people use this road to go into, uh, whatever is developed in that area?
I haven't discussed that with the owner at all, um, I mean, I don't think there's no discuss, there's been no discussion with us about extending the road again. Of course, our first submitted did not show that road going to the property line. Because we just intended this road to serve the lots that are shown here, but with VDOT's requirements for interconnectivity.
You, you're labeling that as a public roadway, it's why, why I'm concerned that you're trying to to put that public roadway and use that to access that part of your property, uh.
I don't think that was the intent, but again, that's a requirement, I think of the subdivision ordinance that we create a, uh, the public road, I mean, that's the by right.
For rural cluster subdivisions, you'd have to have a public road maintained by VDOT.
And again, our first rendition didn't set, didn't show the product, the road going to that property line, it's, it's really because of VDOT's interconnectivity that we extended it.
And then what about the people that live, currently live in that location? Have you all spoke to them about how all of these homes are going to affect them and the way they use the roads? And has there been a community meeting or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. It's a, a by right subdivision that, that again, the, the county years ago, you know, we, we worked in the county before rural cluster was, was, uh, proposed approved, but the whole purpose of rural cluster was to try to protect, you know, seventy five percent of the rural area, which is that requirement for open space. And with our plan, we've even, our current plan is showing eighty percent, over eighty percent of open space there, so really it's a, it's a by right that the county has mandated that we cluster these lots and provide that open space. And we believe, you know, this is a great plan that gives us even over that seventy five percent requirement, we're at eighty percent.
Well, yeah, I understand that it's by right, but still there are people who already live down there. And you're bringing all these additional homes, additional people into the area, and I think it would be in your benefit to talk to the community down there to see how they feel about that, even though it is by right. Because, you know, there was a big issue when they were trying to put a campground over there from the neighbors here and now you're putting all these homes there too and I would just like to hear from the people who live down there and see how they feel about that. I mean, whether it's by right or not, people have an opinion, because they're, they were there first, is basically what I'm getting at, so uh, just a basic community meeting would be ideal for them. Um, I guess my issue is I don't like the idea of people just want to come in about talking to the neighbors that are going to be there. You know, the neighbors live there, so talk to them, we see how they feel about that. Um, the roads, you know, the roads are not in that great shape from what I understand, so how do we improve the roads because you're going to increase traffic on that road, you're going to increase people in that neighborhood? And it would be beneficial to talk to them about how they feel about that. Um, and then, you know, again, I see you say BDH, you come by soil testing and well testing, um, has that been completed or do we know that that, those, um, houses can handle? Or there's enough water that can handle that subdivision or?
Again, all that will happen at the appropriate time, which is after the sketch plan process, which, you know, I think staff did a good job of, you know, going through what they say the purpose of the sketch plan, which is really basically for us to get a general, a very general plan to send through you all to get comments about things that we should be looking at to try to address. But really, we don't go through all that detailed information until we get a sketch plan that we know is the basic idea that will work. That, uh, then, you know, and we don't know if any of it works until we actually get approval for health department for VDOT and all those things, but really is the sketch plan's purpose is to just basically get some input. But it's really not something we're looking for approval of anything, it's really just to get comments so that we can then move forward with all those items you're talking about and that are listed here, you know, about um, soil testing, wells, VDOT. So that, that's our next phase, which will happen, and again, that has to go back to plan, all that goes back through planning and is approved through those channels.
I just think it's best to have a community meeting with your neighbors that are currently there, um, before going forward, um. It, it just bothers me that, you know, I'm just going to be honest, it bothers me when developers want to come into an area and bring a big change and not speak with the people who've been there for years. I mean, that's my personal feeling, so I don't know about anyone else, but at least one or two community meetings, letting the community know what you're trying to do, how much traffic you're bringing in there, how many people you're bringing in there to see what their thoughts are on that.
Do you think we should see, uh, some of these things that, uh, VDOT has, uh, suggested in this sketch plan before we make a decision? Uh, you know, we have forty, we could hold this off for forty five days by, by the, uh, law. Uh, and to take a look at it, but, uh, it seems like there's a lot of questions from VDOT about the geometric design and so forth like that too.
Well, again, you know, we received these comments last minute, so we didn't have time for VDOT to respond, I guess, back to respond back, even though the first comments we did have that I actually sent in April fourteenth, the reply to VDOT, we never got responses back. I, I'm not, I don't know that there's something in the ordinance that would require us to delay or defer to those items that are final design items, again, the purpose of the sketch plan is to get, you know, uh, get comments back and then we start the real work. You know, we haven't started the real work, which I say the real work, I mean, we've started quite a bit of work here, but we haven't started the final design items that will go through the process, which is your own process, you know, that, that is put in place so that things aren't approved, that can't meet, you know, health department approval, VDOT approval and all those things that we're concerned about. You know, fire safety, we've, we're proposing and on our latest version of the plan, we propose a dry hydrant in that one pond, luckily, we do have three ponds on the property and we're, there's already road that accesses the one down on the pond. And so our plan shows we do dry hydrant there, we're fine with VDOT's one hundred foot diameter radiuses, I mean, fire department suggested it, so we are definitely going to take care to address all the concerns of the health department, VDOT, fire safety.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the property, I've been there multiple times and go past it for thirty four years every day for five days a week, I only live two miles from it and so forth like that. And when the other project was for me, I, I very faithfully went to the property and went to different meetings and actually went out with VDOT to different intersections and so forth like that, so, so I'm very familiar with the property.
So, so Mr. Fortune, as I understand the process, the sketch plan and the, um, yield plan, that, that's a conceptual thing. And then do we get a, maybe staff at the site plan phase or is that staff?
No, the, the planning commissioner's role is either, is really just to accept the sketch plan.
Sketch plan is not really the plan that they're building from.
No. But the commission does have the option to defer this until October.
Is there anything in the, in the VDOT stuff that, that you could see? No, or, or Dan, in your experience, that you would see that would impact this yield or site plan? Um, because my concern would be that that could potentially change based on what VDOT has done, which thinking about this more from a, a, a process standpoint leads me to be a little bit concerned about our process and maybe whether we need to look at that or not.
Um, my concern was a stub out into Almaral County, because that's not an existing road in Almaral County. And whether VDOT would accept that, that's probably my biggest concern, uh, because otherwise would VDOT be willing to grant the waiver for one entrance?
Well, that's what I go back to the, the previous line item and I'm like, they went and got their waiver and had proof of their waiver and, and indicated their waiver, which impacted their sketch plan, so if there's things that VDOT would say or waive, why wasn't it here at this point in the process when it was on the previous subdivision application?
I think that could be a reason for you to defer is to gear back from VDOT on the revised plan because VDOT has not submitted their, um, response.
Now, there is an entrance to this property right near Rurden Lake Road in Almaral County. There is a, a road there that, uh.
I think one of the things that, that, uh, staff had alluded to also is, as part of this, you know, the legal parcels, some of them extend into both counties. As part of this, our plan is to use the county line to adjust the parcels that are in Almaral to combine them into one. So they're kind of sep, they'll be separate and really the open space will just come to the county line there. And again, you know, our first plan showed the cul-de-sac, I think it was three or maybe five hundred feet short of the property line. So there really wasn't a, an intent for us to extend into that, it's really a VDOT requirement. And, and to answer your question about the waiver, that, VDOT actually said, you know, we could ask for a waiver, but in our thinking was, VDOT would probably deny the waiver because usually those are for, if there's some topography or something else that prohibits you from making a connection to the joining property. Um, but it was, we thought it made a lot of sense to provide what VDOT's asking for, without asking for a waiver, is to provide the second connection point, which would allow connectivity between, potentially between streets later on, which is, again, been there. What they've been pushing for, for quite a few years is to have this interconnectivity, so that if you look at their SSAR requirements, you know, it may not apply here, but in a lot of cases, they'll show like a cul-de-sac that comes in that dead ends inside of a property. And maybe you had, you know, a commercial business over here, well, this person that want to go from this house to that commercial business would have to come back out onto the public road, circle around and come to that, to get to that business. The interconnectivity allows the person to go from the house, you know, straight, a shorter course, which is, again, a VDOT. And, and I've, I wonder, I do wonder, did, did VDOT provide comments in the same kind of timeframe that we got for the other project? I mean.
All right, now I cannot speak to that because that project had actually been in the works for considerably longer.
Okay.
Uh, I will, I will mention for everyone's benefit that there's been some staff turnover at VDOT, not to make excuses, but the staff that we had been working with is no longer there. Uh, we have another staff we're working with now and so hopefully, uh, in the future, when we get the technical review committee together, VDOT will be there with them.
I guess I have a question, um. And it all goes back down to the glamping sites. Um, and I'm just going to say it, I'm sorry, I'm just going to be straight with you. I see this as a way to allow them entrance into a proposed lamping site that they want to do. This is what I see this as, I'm sorry, but because it started there and then it got shot down, but it looks like you're crossing over into Almaral anyway, so you're really giving them a thorough way to do that glamping site. If they decide to do it down the road, because at first they didn't have a way to do that glamping site unless they came through Pluvana's property. And if I'm looking at this right, this will could potentially give them that road access on the same piece of property.
There's been no discussion with me about anything like that.
I know.
And, and, and I can say too, that I did look at the frontages along these roads and on Briary Creek in Almaral County, there is a position for a commercial entrance into that, that property. That, but that was just from me looking at all of the frontage on the property. When we first started, I, what I do is I get a topographic map together and I go out to the site, take a look, I walk the roads and see, you know, where can we provide a safe entryway for a subdivision, you know, because again, we don't want to come to you all with a sketch plan that shows something that won't meet the requirements down the road. So I was able to see, you know, if that helps with your, you know, thought process about just providing an access into Almaral County, there's already a, a position on, um, Briary Creek Road for a public access. But again, there's been no discussion with me about anything about anything other than the rural cluster, um, subdivision.
You know, talked about some boundary adjustment with Almaral County to move some of the, uh, Pluvana County line over into Almaral County, is that?
It's just some of the land is on, but is in both counties, so like if you had a hundred acre parcel and twenty five acres were in Almaral and seventy five in Pluvana, we're just going to make the new property line between the subdivision and Almaral County parcels, the county line. So what that does is just leave some fragments of existing parcels in Almaral County. We're just going to combine them together so that they're combined into one, so it's really, doesn't affect anything with what we're discussing here, it's just a matter of fact what the, the staff asked us regarding the, what would happen to those remaining parcels in, in Almaral County.
Any more questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that the planning commission to defer SUV twenty four thirty two. Really, is that should be revenge or remington?
I, I think it's revenge and.
Reventon by, I can't pronounce his last name, Merci Lago, I don't know, LLC. A sketch plan request for a rural cluster major subdivision with respects to approximately two hundred and five acres from tax map twenty six, section A, parcel A two, tax map twenty six, section A, parcel A five A and tax map in twenty six, section A, parcel A thirty eight, subject to the conditions listed in the stat.
If you could state the date, would be October eighth.
And effective October?
That'd be the next planning commission.
Should I say why?
No, no, you're.
Is that enough time? We think we'll have everything.
That's what we, we think it's enough time to give up the staff reports, VDOT, BDH.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, uh, I mean, like I said, we have a contact now, VDOT, so I don't see any problem getting back what we need from him by then.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Morgan to defer until the October the eighth meeting, uh, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Shiftlet. All in favor of deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, vote five zero to defer to the October eighth meeting. Okay, the next item is unfinished business, SDP twenty four oh six, South Boston Convenience Store by KFP one LLC and Chimp Engineering.
So a lot of the information you see was, uh, was presented last month, so I'm not going to labor to point a whole lot, but just to remind everybody, this is a sketch plan for a gas station, convenience store, car wash and commercial space on South Austin Road. Now, the parcel in question was rezoned from A one agricultural to B one business in two thousand and seven. And they're looking to redevelop at this point, just under half the property, uh, and the rest will be developed at a future time. And just to remind the commission, this was deferred, uh, at, at August, at the August thirteenth meeting, with the main concern being about the cemetery on the property. Uh, this is some, just specifics of the proposed development which we covered last month. Uh, there will be a second entrance, uh, on the site, uh, first, the, the west side will be tractor supply, east side will be a new entrance. Um, water. Water and sewer at the moment, they are looking at private well and septic, but they are in discussions with La Cua Virginia regarding connecting to their nearby system. And then the cemetery, of course, was the the main concern that caused the deferral, which I'll discuss more in just a second. And just a reminder, by technical review committee concerns, we're just getting VDOT comments on sight lines. We have been in touch with VDOT and are still waiting on a response for the east entrance there. The water and sewer and then E N S, stormwater control, as far as the plans are concerned. Again, here's your general location on South Boston Road. Here's the parcel in question. And tractor supplies to the west and as talent country self-storage to the east. And here's the site plan, which you saw in saw last month. And here we go. And a close up of the site plan, the cemetery is more closely delineated in this this picture. And then the engineering firm did provide a survey with the the cemetery delineating, I got circled here on this particular slide. And we have a little more information on the on the cemetery. We have some photos. Staff had has been out to look at the site and the cemetery does have a delineated area. The fence is down some places, but it is there. Here's some more photos of the cemetery. And this is a street view with the cemetery labeled and you see tractor supply off to the right. Now, there are twelve identified deceased in the cemetery. When when staff went out, we we didn't really go out to look for the grave, the the count, the grave markers. We were just looking for delineation and to see if some of the see if the grave markers were labeled or not. So we didn't we didn't see all of them, but there are twelve there and you'll see some of them are labeled and some of them are not. Should staff accept this site plan? Our recommendations are meet all final site plan improvements, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, outdoor lighting plans to be included in the site plans. Again, meeting E N S and storm D D D Q stormwater regulations and VDOT regulations. And I believe the engineer and or developer are here tonight if they'd like to come up and speak. And also take any questions the commission might have.
Good evening, Chairman Bed, members of the commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a planner with Chimp Engineering. Here tonight representing the property owner, K F P one LLC. Todd, thank you for the robust staff report and response to the commission's concerns about the about the cemetery. We do, you know, have that area surveyed and delineated. As Todd noted, when you go out to the site, there are certain areas of the fence that that are down, but it is very clearly identified what the limits of the cemetery are. And as you walk the cemetery, it's kind of also very clear where some grave sites are on the property. You can also tell by looking at the soils just beyond the cemetery that there has been prior disturbance and grading on the site just beyond the cemetery limits. Those are not natural soils and you can see evidence of 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 prior grading disturbance. And so it looks that in the past, when prior land clearing and grading activity was done on the property, that you know, there was no infringement upon the the cemetery, but that those limits are very clearly defined. If there's any further questions, I'm happy to answer them, but thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I just really appreciate the due diligence to provide more things about the cemetery. I think that's an important cultural resource and having that upfront would have avoided a defer. Appreciate your taking them seriously and getting up here and taking all you can.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question. I've seen, I've looked at some of the names. Some of these songs here. And then some people who live further down the road who are Browns also. And I'm just trying to figure out, do we know if there are any relations between them and these people and if so, do they have any specifics that they would like to see around the cemetery to protect their loved ones, if it is their loved ones? Especially Nanny Brown. That name is just in my head for some reason. And if it is the same family, it might be benefit, you know, to talk to them to see how to go like preserve it. I don't know if the county can do anything to further investigate it or to see how that cemetery cemetery came to be and who the relatives are of those people.
There was also some Housens buried there too.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
Which possibly is in me because my great grandmother Molly Housens is buried in that Housen Cemetery inside Lake Marcella.
Yeah, so.
And just to remind everyone, the names of the deceased are in your staff or in the packet.
But I appreciate you to take it because I was one of the ones who had some of the concerns that whether we make sure we preserve the cemetery in a way that we're not disturbing the people that's there. You know, if we're sure that that's all that's there, body type of ground penetrations, you know, anything like that done. I don't see any problem with it. It might be beneficial to do that, to have someone come in there and see if there are other graves that you just can't see from the naked eye. Yeah, so you're not disturbing someone, so.
Absolutely. And you know, we'll have a kind of how we've worked on many sites where, you know, cemeteries have have been on the property that are impacted by development. And so there's always a, you know, clear fence line and limits of of construction. And so there's no grading activity or anything that goes beyond that. And the ground penetrating radar is, you know, something that comes up often on projects.
Well, convinced, I think. It is very clear.
Clear.
It is very clear that everything is inside that fence line.
Yeah.
I can attest to fence lines there because I must have over.
Yeah, going getting there through all the prior grading activity all around it is a little rocky right now. But once you actually get out to the site, gets very clear, you know, where the tree line is, the limits and that there's, you know, there's no other you know, indication in the soils just by looking at it that there's any other grave sites beyond that.
And the big indicator is the ground cover.
Yeah.
Stocks.
Right.
Yeah.
Appreciate you. Appreciate your concerns. Don't be called a developer because I'm part of the community, okay? So we have a thousand acres right across the bridge, the farm on the right, where we put up all the Christmas lights and everything. That property has a a huge old graveyard on it that goes back to the pre-revolutionary war. You couldn't even see it when I brought the property. We have restored that fenced it. We put a Christmas tree up in it every year because there's small children buried in there. We would take the same care for this graveyard. We will take better care of it than the family members are taking care of it right now because it's a mess. So just want to put you at ease on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate. Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Do you have a motion by Mr. Shiftlet? You got to read the motion.
I move the planning commission accept S D P twenty-four six, South Boston Convenience Market. Site development plan, request for gas station, convenience store, car wash and commercial space with respect to tax map eighteen, section A, partial fifty.
Do I have a motion of Mr. Shiftlet to accept S D P twenty-four oh six? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second on Ms. Kilpatrick. All in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye, approve five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, I want to is a public hearing for Z T A twenty-four oh four.
Mister Chair, members of planning commission, this is in relation to the work that the solar ordinance committee has been undertaking. I just jumped in, let me know if you.
Whenever.
Okay, all right. So just to remind everybody, on July third, the board did approve an amendment to section twenty-two dash four dash two point two of the county code to remove utility scale solar rate, solar generation facilities as allowed use by special use permit and A one agricultural. And since that time, the solar ordinance review committee has been working on a new district S one. And you may recall that the initial discussions were about keeping that S one district within a certain distance from transmission lines, but the decision was ultimately made to make it a countywide zoning district. What you see on your screen here, our uses are are being kept for S one that were in A one. Now, I won't read all these too, but the the handful of by right and S U P only uses from A one are going to be retained in the solar one per the proposed ordinance. And just to remind everybody, utility scale solar generating facilities are allowed in S one by an S U P. It's not by rights to an S U P. In addition to developing the new zoning district, a new article which is being proposed, Article twenty-eight supplemental regulations that would regulate siding, construction management, decommissioning these facilities. And just to give everyone some background, maximum size for any such facility will be five hundred acres. And we're proposing no more than three percent of the county's total acreage to be used for such facilities, approximately fifty-four hundred acres. And taking it a step further, limiting it to no more than one percent of total county acreage within each alleged election district. That would be, if you divide it, it'd be approximately eighteen hundred acres. But we crunched some numbers. And hopefully this table will make sense to you. The course, the left column is the district and then the next column is total acreage in each district. And I had staff crunch some numbers in G I S to come up with those numbers. And then next column over, one percent of total acreage in each district. So in Columbia District, one percent of your total acreage is six hundred sixty-four point five nine acres. Cunningham District, one percent is three hundred twelve point thirty-five. Fork Union, one percent is seven hundred eighteen point one eight. Palmyra District, one hundred and fifty point four eight. And Ravanna District, eighteen point four four. That's one percent of your total acreage for each district. And I'll leave this slide up for an extra second. So if you factor in eighteen hundred acres per district, that far right column is your percentages. In Columbia District, eighteen hundred acres is two point seven percent. Cunningham, five point seven six. Fork Union District, two point five. Palmyra District, eleven point nine six, and Ravanna District, ninety-seven point six two. And I would note those numbers in those last two columns are rounded. And here's some of the regulations. It's 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 fairly lengthy, regular proposed regulations. So some of the highlights currently facility, there'd be five hundred foot setbacks from adjacent parcel, from dwellings on adjacent parcels. Three hundred seventy-five feet from adjacent property lines. Three hundred feet from public right of way. Five hundred feet from your entrance corridors, which are Route six, US fifteen, Route fifty-three and US two fifty. A thousand feet from the James River, Ravanna River and Harbor Rivers and all lakes and five hundred feet from ponds and perennial streams. And we're also buffering screening regulations proposed here.
One second, go back to the setback. So then you know, this went through the committee, these numbers were not unanimous. Basically, this is the majority of the committee who came up with these numbers. There was a range, lower and upper range. I did want to clarify, this was the one part of the ordinance was unanimous decision, the committee, the recommendation.
Which bullet point, the last one?
I think it was more than just the last one.
Yeah, it was the I believe it was almost all.
Many of them. Okay. This slide, okay.
This slide, yeah, just the setback slide. It was not unanimous with this. I wanted to state that this wasn't unanimous committee recommendation.
Just a point of clarification, I thought we want to show what the range these were as a yield of our discussion.
Sure, we can discuss the range. I mean, the lower part of the range was two hundred. This was discussed by the committee by one member proposed two hundred and this was, you know, the upper range was basically this number. I believe we discussed, I mean, we threw a lot, the committee threw a lot of numbers out there. We discussed, you know, five hundred, originally this was five hundred feet for public right of way. It was five hundred feet for adjacent property lines. And then the majority came up, came up with the numbers of three seventy-five property lines, three hundred.
Oh, the last one, the five hundred feet from ponds and perennial streams. I've had a lot of calls about that particular one before the fact that like the protection of the Chesapeake Bay thing for solar, it's only a hundred feet from streams and things like that. And out and some of the other things that other people brought up to me that in our subdivision things that would say that are fifty, a hundred feet streams and something like that. So there was a concern, that's a major concern I've had from people calling me on the phone about just the last one. Do you know how, what type of, why they came up with five hundred feet for that?
I thought five hundred was a number that was discussed. We, the committee did not see the map that was provided recently to the planning commission showing all the perennial streams of the county. We were not aware of that until this week. I don't think the committee realized the prevalence of perennial streams in the county. So we'll say if the planning commission recommended, you know, a lower number, a less restrictive number, we would not have to readvertise. But if you advertise, I mean, if you basically recommend approval of a higher number, you would have to readvertise because it's more restrictive. So technically you could go down to the majority of the planning commission want to go down to four hundred, three hundred. Since it's less restrictive, you're allowed to do that. But I think that map that was sent out this week definitely does show how prevalent perennial streams are. And it makes sense because you have three rivers in the county. But basically it would make developing a solar farm virtually impossible in the county to five hundred foot.
Additionally, we've struggled with kind of redefined powers. There really is no definition. But we've definitely overshot what are the standard setbacks for environmental purposes to allow for controlled segmentation runoff natural filtering through the grasses and the protection of the flora and fauna that thrive in those areas. You mentioned the Chesapeake Bay Act. There is also a standard to state uses for the purpose of conservation instruments. And then our own regulations as a county.
It did more to go.
Yeah, yes, sir. So just real briefly, the regulations are proposing a vegetative buffer of at least a hundred seventy-five feet, which would be within required setback and around the entire perimeter. We are getting some flexibility, allowing the developer to use existing forest buffer or new vegetative screen or berms. And then bonds would be posted to ensure maintenance of those buffers. Those bonds would only be released after decommissioning. Height restrictions, structures no more than twenty feet above the ground. Six foot high fence with opaque screening on the interior while allowing access to wildlife corridors. Outlet, outdoor lighting only for security and onsite maintenance. And then the panels would be placed to prevent concentrated radiation or glare being directed toward other roads or other properties. Excuse me, signs would be restricted. Actually, the only signs being allowed are signs with emergency information on the fencing structures or buildings within the project. The proposed regulations do include two separate access points for emergency management and a twenty-foot loop around the interior of the fence, but outside the panel area. And we'd also restrict construction activity to seven AM to six PM Monday through Saturday, except for emergency repairs. Wiring for distribution and transmission lines will be underground. Wiring for distribution and transmission lines will be underground. New transmission lines will be subject to plan and development review. And then any wires located on the poles of the panels would be in conduit. Let me go from going too fast. Any project larger than fifty acres, the applicant would be required to identify wildlife corridors on the site plan. And any areas between fencing would be kept open to allow for movement of migratory animals and wildlife. We are going to require a landscaping plan with the S U P request. And I'll just direct your attention to the bottom bullet point, landscaping should only approve plan would be installed prior to beginning power production. I think that's an important one. Also required vegetation management plan and erosion incentive control plan. And you'll note that the E N S plan must be approved by the Soil and Water Conservation District and D E Q before any land disturbance takes place. And we also may require the applicant to fund a third-party E N S control inspector or construction, which my office would choose.
I did want to highlight one change in the E N S plan. So the committee had discussed the Virginia Tech white paper, rather than including the entire white paper, basically only including specific B M Ps. The problem is there's a little over forty B M Ps in that white paper. If you included ten or twenty of those, it would add a lot to this order in a multiple pages. So staff discussed and made more sense when you get to the siting agreement discussion and the S U P discussion to add the B M Ps as conditions. Because each site will be a little different on which B M Ps will be needed. Also, hopefully, the white paper will be in final form at that point. And so we won't be referencing a white paper as part of the ordinance. But staff spent quite an amount of time one afternoon looking over all the B M Ps and they all, I mean, they're all great guidance. So it's hard to pick and choose ten of these or fifteen of these out of the forty should be part of the ordinance. So that's the recommendation, staff.
And some more restrictions in the proposed regulations, no panels on slopes of twenty percent or greater. Those slopes should be remained undisturbed as much as possible or practicable. And we are requiring impact analysis for historic and cultural resources, including grave sites. And if any such resources are identified, the applicant's going to be required to include a plan to preserve and protect them to the extent possible. Regulations also propose groundwater monitoring before construction, after construction, and in every five years during the facility's operation, and then when decommissioning is complete. And the results of that monitoring must be submitted to my office. Emergency management plan is also going to be required as well as a Knox box or code for emergency personnel to access the property. And the owner-operator of any such facility be required to coordinate plans and training with county fire and rescue. Decommissioning plan, before a permit is issued, the plan must be submitted and approved. Regulations required to be updated every five years. Any facility that's not active in continuous service for a period of six months must be removed at the expense of the owner-operator. I want to bring your attention to that bullet point. And then the surety agreement and the full amount of estimated decommissioning costs will be required before any land disturbing permits issued. And we're also going to require panels to be recycled at a certified recycling facility. And again, third-party consultants may be engaged to review special use S U P applications and related documents. If that, if we do have to engage third parties, the applicant will be bearing the cost of that. The board supervisors does have the right to waive or modify any requirements in this proposed regulation in the issuance of any special use permit. And county staff and employees reserve the right to inspect such facilities giving reasonable, upon giving reasonable notice to the And that's all we have for our presentation. We'll take any questions. Are there any other questions the commission might have?
Anyone else have any other question? Thank you. This time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak will be limited in five minutes. You'll have to give your name and your address. I have a list of seven people to speak to start with, so I'll start with it looks like Larry Willis.
Larry or Laney.
Not Laney, Larry, Laney Willis.
Mister.
Okay. The next is Mike Myers. Okay. Jennifer Price.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I live at two five four nine Bybee's Church Road, so I am a Fluvan County resident. I'm also a professor of environmental science. I teach for Brightpoint Community College. And in the course that I teach, a lot of things that we cover involve evaluating the pros and cons of different energy sources. All energy sources have pros and cons. Solar is not perfect, but it is, it is clear to those that, those of us that have been studying these pros and cons of different energy sources that solar and wind power are far and away superior to the other energy choices that we have, including coal and natural gas, which provides significant air pollution, substantial destruction of habitat due to mining, and substantial disruption to water resources. I'm concerned that I have heard a lot of comments from the public at previous meetings as well as online, that people are afraid of solar, which seems very irrational. First of all, solar is not new. The first solar panels were installed and used to produce energy in a home in eighteen eighty-four. Panels have been widely used for many decades, and the technology has been getting better and better. Even large-scale solar farms, they may seem new to us because we're not that familiar with them, but they've been used in California for thirty years now. So we have a lot of information on the safety of this technology. There's a misconception that these panels are going to release metals into the soil. There have been numerous studies that have evaluated that as an issue and found that it is not a problem. The loss of farmland shouldn't be a problem because there's a growing body of research and a growing practice of integrating the solar panels with various types of agriculture, including both crop production and livestock production. And it's been shown to be very successful. The roots of the plants can help to minimize the soil compaction and potential erosion, therefore protecting nearby areas, allowing habitat for wildlife. And there are even many studies, of course, it varies by crop type and soil type and solar panel density. But there are many studies that actually show that increased crop yields result when the panels are there because the shading from the panels reduces heat stress on the plants and reduces water loss. Planting pollinator-friendly plants around the solar panels is a practice that's growing in popularity. That can be a benefit to neighboring farms because bringing in pollinators helps to increase crop yields in the area. So I'm a big proponent of the agro-voltaics movement. That's the integration of agriculture and solar facilities. My concern is that the buffers that have been proposed, as someone mentioned earlier, are so restrictive that there would be no area in the county where these solar facilities could occur. They seem extreme. We should be welcoming solar energy rather than trying to prevent it from our county. I'm also, it wasn't really discussed at this meeting, but something that's come up at previous meetings has been the desire to have an increased property tax rate in the solar district. One of the things that we teach in environmental science that's considered fundamental to allowing for sustainability and energy use is a concept called full-cost pricing. And that's when we take products and services and energy sources that involve destructive environmental practices such as the coal mining. We have to, we now have to decommission those coal ash ponds and clean up toxic waste. If there's an environmentally destructive aspect of the operation, we should charge more for it by adding extra taxes. If there's something that's environmentally friendly, like solar or wind power, we should then subsidize it so that we're evening the cost of it and we're preparing the public for cleaning up environmental problems. So I would propose no extra taxes on the solar farms because we need them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Matt English.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt English. I'm from Appomattox County.
Your address, please.
Two four six Dean John's Place, Appomattox, two four five two two. I crossed two rivers to get here. And anyway, I come before y'all tonight in peace and as a neighbor and as a farmer. The lady that spoke here, she mentioned a big word called agavontex. I'd say it's farming on the panels. But that's what I do. We started a little over a year ago. I think I'm a seventh-generation farmer. We've dated all the way back to the seventeen hundreds. I have family that's formed in Buckingham County. We still have a family farm in Buckingham County. We used to raise tobacco for many years. Of course, tobacco's phased out. Crops are kind of hit or miss. And we primarily make our living off livestock now. I always handled sheep since I was a child. My family handled cattle. And like Dad said, when we moved in sheep on the solar panel, he said, you know, this is kind of like farming like George Jetson. And yeah, I said, it's different. And six months later, we had our best lamb crop ever. We had a two hundred and twenty-two percent average. That means everybody on a solar site had twins or triplets. No singles. When you're in a farming business, as tight as money is now, that's making money. The compensation we get on maintaining these farms and farming them and with that ratio of lambs, it's unreal. Everybody wants to talk about panels leaking, environmental issues. I wouldn't take crops and livestock that I've raised genetically and put all my savings in and dump them in harm's way. We've been there for a little over a year. We've had zero issues with health, health of staff, family members, any equipment, erosion issues, fencing. And the biggest one, if you're in the livestock industry, is predators. When they put that fence up that you showed right there, six foot, which I'm working on an eight foot, three strands of barbed wire over it, keeps the bears out. Bobcats don't climb it. Coatis, if they dig there, you know, we find it quick, we patch it. And we don't have any problems with it. The only thing that I've got with Fluvan, and we really want to do business with y'all, is the setbacks. The thousand-foot setback on the rivers, that's a little tough. If I come into county and I buy a farm here to farm it anyway, and I put in a conservation easement, I think it's a hundred foot. I think you mentioned that earlier. And away from the creeks is what they fence out. You know, a thousand feet, that's pretty tough. That's several football fields. That's a lot of land when you're looking at a fairly larger site. That's going to, you know, keep the solar companies from coming in. The tax revenue from the solar companies, it buys a lot of school buses, a lot of patrol cars, pays for a lot of county staff salaries. So. And lastly, I would like to mention the solar companies and the community has really supported me. Tonight, I'm sure there's going to be people speaking in opposition. But when you come in and you preserve farmland, not like what these other speakers that was here developing, I see a lot of development going on here. This is preserving the farmland. If the companies that I do business with and want to do business with, want to do business with me, we're going to actively farm it just like a family farm. Yeah, the panels getting away some, but hey, that's what we got to do. It's just a modern way of farming. Things change. So with that being said, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with y'all. I look forward to coming back across the rivers and maybe bringing in a couple loads of sheep. So right now, I think we started out last year with sixty. And as of this morning, we're up to two hundred and nine on solar. So thank y'all.
Thank you. Next person on my list is Skylar Zuck.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Skylar Zuck here with Energy Right. First want to again thank and commend the Solar Committee for their diligent work over the past few months assembling an ordinance. I can honestly say I don't think that I've been in a county that's been so thorough across so many meetings, talking about so many different topics with experts invited and testimony on the ordinance elements. It's been a long, long road and want to commend the Solar Committee for their work. I think the Solar Committee also realized that setbacks were the biggest pain point and potentially the last element to fix within this ordinance and I think constructively gave you all a range of setbacks to consider. I'll start by saying I think everyone in this room wants clean air, wants clean water, and to protect the rural landscape and the rural character that folks have come to know in Fluvan County. These setbacks that are proposed are filled with unintended consequences and very much adversely affect smaller landowners and prevents small projects from coming up for consideration. I don't think that's the goal of anybody here either. We did some back-of-the-envelope calculations and a three hundred seventy-five-foot setback on a fifty-acre parcel would leave less than twenty-five percent of that land developable for a project. Have a hundred-acre parcel with three hundred seventy-five-foot setbacks, forty percent of that land would be usable. And that's if there's no streams. If you had a three hundred seventy-five-foot setback and you had a stream running through the parcel, a fifty-acre parcel completely unusable. A one hundred-acre parcel with a stream, ten percent usable, ten acres out of one hundred. Say you had a five hundred-acre parcel, of which there are very few in the county. And you had a stream under, less than fifty percent, less than half of that would be buildable because of how stringent these setbacks are. Shared with you a map that the Virginia Department of Energy has put together, and we've previously shared with the commission of the average setbacks across the entire Commonwealth from property lines, from houses, and the width of landscape buffers. Landscape buffer you all are proposing is four times the state average. Property line setbacks are at least three times the state average. Residential setbacks, about twice the state average. These water feature setbacks, as was mentioned earlier, are maybe ten times, maybe more times the state, the averages across the state. Chesterfield County requires thirty-foot panel setbacks from water features or wetlands. Cold Pepper, Buckingham County, an ample one hundred feet. Not five hundred feet, not a thousand feet. I don't think there's an appreciation for what the Department of Environmental Quality has done recently by calling these panels impervious, therefore doubling or tripling or quadrupling the number of stormwater basins needed for a given project to absolutely one hundred percent commit that these projects don't change the quality or the quantity of water leaving a site pre-development versus post-development. It's an important element that happened two years ago. And many, many counties have found ways to do this constructively with these setbacks that allow for more flexibility and for more land. with these setbacks that allow for more flexibility and for more landowners to come forward with projects for your yes vote or projects for your no vote. We've talked about state, the the state preemption threats that have happened over the past couple of years with Republican and Democrat support. State leaders need folks like you to be uh, be um constructive in a lot of these conversations, not tripling the state average with setbacks and buffers and altogether preventing development from happening. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. The next person is Kyle West.
Kyle West, uh, two one eight Noel Farm Lane, Charlottesville, Virginia. I think I actually came here to say much of the same, so I won't uh take your time. I, maybe I'll add just two additional points. We're business people. And so we're, I'm from Richmond, Virginia. I live in Charlottesville. My company is based out of Charlottesville. I've been coming and doing business in Flu Vanna for almost a decade. And so, you know, I I would, I'm gonna defer to Mr. English, Professor. Take, you know, I'm I'm not a farmer. I live on a farm, but I'm not a farmer. I'm not a professor. So please don't listen to me when it comes to all, you know, the the life and their experience, what's going on. The research has been, they've been done. Uh, but I will say from a business standpoint, these projects are a tremendous economic development engine. And that's not because of subsidies. It's because they're the cheapest price of power that we're gonna see in the mid-Atlantic. Uh, it's not true everywhere, not claiming that. But what that means is that there's huge demand for this energy. There's a huge demand from people like Amazon and Apple, like huge corporations. We're seeing data centers come up all over Virginia. It is the hub for data centers. And what those data centers want, they want renewable energy. And so we're here. I am a developer. I don't, I don't like calling myself that either, but that's what I am. But what does that means when we come into a community? We do want to get to know you. We want to understand what your concerns are. And we want to make sure that it's a win-win for everyone, because otherwise we shouldn't be here, right? And so I'm not gonna talk about the setbacks. It's been addressed. I'm not gonna talk about, you know, leakage out of panels, because frankly, that was a conversation that happened twenty years ago that we really shouldn't be having now. What I am gonna talk about briefly is that Flu Vanna has had multiple opportunities to pursue economic development opportunities that you're facing this evening. And you'll continue to face for the next month or two. And I think if we're frank, there's been some mistakes made. And some of that was due to fear. And I don't think we need to be fearful of new opportunities. This is an opportunity that you've already mitigated any risks of. You have cap acreage. There's already a cap due to capacity on distribution and transmission lines that won't allow this. I've heard comments that solar is gonna go everywhere. Well, you've already addressed that. What we want to do is bring quality projects to your community to build schools, to buy the school buses, that preserve cultural and historic resources, that are responsible land use measures where we're preserving waterways and wetlands. And at the same time, driving millions and millions of dollars into communities that are seeing no other business coming to that community. And so I hope we'll weigh those two things and think about, okay, if we turn this away, if we deny this, then what? Then what's coming next? Because this is one of the fastest growing industries in the entire world. Virginia's embraced it, not just under Democratic Democratic governor, but also our current governor. Governor Youngkin has an all above energy strategy. He could have very well tried to fight the Virginia Clean Economy Act, but hasn't. And the reason is because he embraces nuclear. He understands the value of solar. We're doing offshore wind. And these are economic development opportunities that I hope Flu Vanna will understand and align with both Democratic and Republican administrations. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Gary Wood.
I've got some updated uh drawings with the newer um setbacks regarding to existing solar farms, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. So that's why I set them over here, because I'm gonna talk about some other things, but just so you can see the impact. I am Gary Wood. I live at eighty Simpsons Lane in Livingston, Virginia. I am the CEO of Central Virginia Electric Co-op, which has an office at twelve twenty-four Salem Church Road in Palmyra. We've had an office here since nineteen fifty-nine. We first opened it. We've been in business here since nineteen thirty-seven. Um, as an electric co-op, we're a not-for-profit electric utility formed under IRS Code five oh one C twelve. Our margins go back to our members. Uh, there are no shareholders who take money out of the system. It goes right back if, when we make a margin to the the members of the co-op. About a fourth of our, all of our co-op members are in Flu Vanna County. Flu Vanna is a significant portion. Um, we're dealing with a lot of issues in the electric industry right now. Not the least of which is rapidly rising energy costs because of capacity shortages. We can talk another night about the fact that the lights are gonna go out. In my estimation, somewhere in years three or four, could be two years from now, but it's gonna be really, really soon at peak times in Virginia. Simply, the load is growing faster than we're building generation. Whether solar comes in Flu Vanna or not is gonna not affect that, and that's why that's a separate discussion. But that's driving those prices up. Central Virginia Electric Co-op is an independent power producer. We have limited ways we can manage our costs when those costs are skyrocketing. One of the things we can do is build local solar energy that uh allows us not to depend on the transmission grid and allows us to have benefit of owning some capacity, because that's what the markets are pushing toward. They, they're trying to encourage more generation. That is the type of generation we can build. We can't build a new gas plant. I think there will have to be gas plants and nuclear plants and solar plants if we're going to serve all of the data centers and the other loads that we want. But in Flu Vanna, that is the place where it fits. There are only about two places on our system where solar makes economic sense for us of any size. When I say any size, it's bigger than a megawatt, and at that point, it gets really expensive. So if we go up to four, five, eight, ten megawatts, we have to build in an area where we can absorb all of that solar on the lightest load day without feeding back into the Dominion system. So we have to be able to use it right here. So it has to be used here for it to be economical. We can only do that in areas where we have a significant population and significant load. And along the sixty-four quarter, we have a transmission line that ties four substations together. That's why northern Flu Vanna is a good fit. The other areas in western Almarlin down into Nelson County, we're right now starting an eight-megawatt uh field down there to take advantage of that opportunity. And by the way, we're gonna have sheep on it. Um, so we have limited opportunities, and it's really important for us to have an opportunity here. I would ask, first of all, that you look at us differently. We are different. We're serving your community. We're serving the folks of Flu Vanna County, and they will get the direct benefit. It won't go to other places. Uh, the second thing is we're not gonna build really large uh developments. The ones that I I passed around are fifty-two and sixty-two acre um sites that we built uh five-megawatt uh uh generation on. In both cases, took up about twenty-five acres for the generation, about fifty percent of the land that was used. If you use the new setbacks, we would be able to put zero on one and maybe one megawatt on the other. Um, and you'll see that those are wooded around them on the sides that uh where there are homes. Uh, we try to be a good neighbor. We, we're gonna live here. Our folks are gonna live here. The the people who work for us, we're gonna be here for a long time. Um, but we need to have either some way to recognize smaller projects need less setback or all projects need less setback, or maybe not-for-profit utilities still fit under the ag side with a smaller uh scale project like we normally build up to ten megawatts. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Woods is the last person I have on the list. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. State your name and address. You'll be limited to five minutes.
My name is Paul Wyre. I live at forty-eight seventy-three James Madison Highway in Fork Union. Um, I think most everyone here has already heard uh the description of what happens if the new setbacks are put in place, because there are not many places at all in Fu- in Flu Vanna County that would meet any criteria as far as having leftover land that solar panels could be placed on once you enact the setbacks. Uh, I've heard of these setbacks and I've started wondering uh what is the motive of the setbacks? And I think lady over there pointed out some of them. Um, they're stated in terms that uh, I would prefer to s- see stated in some other ways. For instance, why not state the setback from rivers in terms of hundred-year floodplains? Um, as stated now, thousand feet, uh, there are some places along the James River that the floodplain is wider than a thousand feet. Some places it's narrower. Uh, but in other words, your proposed setback would at some points allow the building of panels on James River floodplain. Now, I don't think a developer is gonna do that. I don't think so- solar developer is going to do that. But the, the um setback doesn't seem to make any sense to me with the reality of what I see out in the floodplains. So I think you ought to examine the floodplain set or the river setbacks in terms of, for instance, a hundred-year floodplain. Um, I would thoroughly agree with the hundred-foot setback uh, from rivers, ponds, such like. Uh, I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. I know it's a hard decision, but I again would repeat that I don't think you'd find many places in Flu Vanna that you get to build solar uh with the proposed setbacks. And by the way, I do appreciate uh the emphasis on decommissioning. Um, I have been approached myself. I own a farm in Bremo. I happen to own a farm that fronts on the James River. Um, I've been approached not for solar panels, but for battery storage for solar systems. And one of the fights in my talking with the developer of the battery storage systems has been about decommissioning. And oh, well, we don't want to put a bond up on a bond on that and several statements like that. So uh, that is a problem that the landowners are having as they deal with a solar company. So you did the right thing in talking about bonding for decommissioning. Uh, I just feel that the setbacks are uh untenables. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Sweeney, three four five six James Madison in Fork Union. Um, you know, I I too, I, you know, you guys might know, I I'm a lawyer by trade, a business lawyer. So I too um am very interested in in business opportunities around the places I live. And I I will say that if it's a mistake to deny solar companies from coming into Flu Vanna and turning large swaths of Flu Vanna into reflective parking lots, then let's make that mistake together for those of us that live here. I'd also say that if I'm wrong about wanting to preserve the beauty, the wildlife, and the rural character of our of our county, then I don't want to be right. I love this county. It's beautiful. I love driving around here, and we've been talking this whole time about trying, trying to find the right balance, about preserving this beautiful place that we live while providing some opportunities for solar. And I think we've seen along this journey that we've all had together that there's been some solar developers that have come and made, you know, different types of cases and use cases than others. And we've seen some of these smaller sites uh with, I think, some better compelling arguments about serving local people with local energy versus these large mega developers that are coming in Virginia and so many other states, developing mega projects that don't develop, that don't reduce the energy bills for the local residents by one cent. You know, there was just a newspaper article last week that the big data centers that were, that we've been talking about through this whole journey too, are now having, I think it was a seven-year runway right now for new data centers coming in before they can go online because of all the restrictions with all, with all of the the uh, the the problems with not having enough power generation. There is no, you could, you could turn the entire state into a solar parking lot and then wouldn't provide enough energy for these data centers that are getting, that are consuming all of Virginia energy. The answer is not gonna be flattening the farmlands for that problem. The governor's been talking about nuclear and other things. We've got to let the the legislature of the Commonwealth come up with a plan that's actually gonna work, and it's not gonna be solar. That's just a fact. About this, this actual um, the ordinance, I too want to thank you guys for all the hard work. Um, I did want to call out uh for your benefit. I looked up lots of different ordinances. Um, Gloucester County has a very good one and had a couple pieces that I just wanted you guys to consider on top of what you're already looking at. If it gets reopened after tonight, I will advocate for a number of things um to add in to improve what you guys have already started on. One of them that I think was very good from their plan was, you know, for the look, for the landscape buffers that you guys are already talking about, was making them specifying that it's gotta be year-round buffering and continuous screening. I thought they had some very good um language in their, in their ordinance about that. Um, also, I saw that the provision that you guys talked about, about making the developer pay for uh some of the some of the planned parts at the beginning. Uh, Gloucester County also has a provision that says that the developers have to pay for various types of inspections throughout the entire lifespan of the project and that the county can hire third-party inspectors to come in and do those for soil, for groundwater, and for other compliance reasons for the various things you guys put in your ordinance. And I thought that was a very good um add-on. They, they included, by the way, a neutral third party coming in to do soil testing regularly and groundwater testing. Um, I also wanted to mention that they also had some standards you guys might want to look at and compare, like actual standards to hold the the developer to like um for the fire, fire typistics for battery storage in in particular. Um, Gloucester, you know, ta- calls out, you know, ANSI standard four fifty-seven and number of other numbered standards to require compliance for battery storage in particular because of all the fire dangers. And I think it would be very wise for us to also, you know, state the actual standards that they would have to comply with, and that could be then inspected and uh enforced later through life. Um, and then finally, one thing that we haven't talked about in a while that was missing, and I I think it would, it's, it's unfortunate, is a preference for brownfield developments. You know, we haven't seen that in our ordinance, but you know, a lot of people have said, if you're gonna do a solar project, why not do it on an old landfill? why not do it on an old landfill? Or why not do it down on, on our old Dominion site that's been decommissioned? Um, never heard a good answer for why we're not doing that. And I think that would be another good direction to go in if we have to reopen these things tonight.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Karen Bowles, fifty-five twenty James Madison Highway in Fork Union. I am also the grandmother of the best behaved children you've ever seen in your life. So thank you, Kate and Zeke, for sitting there so quietly so your mother, my daughter-in-law can attend this meeting. I just have a couple of things I want to bring to your attention, and I want to thank each of you for the hours that you've spent here and on your own researching and asking questions of the citizens of Fluvana County. I really do appreciate that. So I just have a couple of things I'd like you to consider. I've talked to a couple of you about the fact that Route Six is listed as a Virginia byway. I don't know that we, you all discussed that. But um, that's a pretty special designation and something that's worth saving, I believe. A solar plant construction on Route Six would likely remove that designation because of the qualifications used. And I won't read all of them, but it says in order to be considered for a designation as a Virginia byway, a segment of road must substantially meet the test of eight criteria. And the first one being the route provides important scenic values and experiences. So I would ask you to consider that, and you all would know um, in, in your discussions, the, the setback that might be um, written in your proposal to preserve our byway because there are, Virginia contains six hundred and twenty-nine miles of officially designated byways located in twenty-eight counties. And I think that's pretty special that we have one. So please consider that. Also, about the three percent um, acreage designation, we the defenders of Fluvana group feel that's pretty aggressive. So I might ask that you, in, in talking to some folks around Virginia, um, one percent is more in line with, with what a lot of people have. And some people in their in their plans don't even have a percentage listed. So we're asking that you eliminate that three percent, move it down to one percent, or maybe don't list a percent at all. Lastly, I like to read this. The Fluvana defenders request you to consider a zoning ordinance that requires all stakeholders, including the property owner, to provide sufficient guarantees and financial assurance that all environmental site remediation cleanups are satisfied. Solar companies have been telling us, and you heard it tonight, that there's no potential danger or harm that could come to our land from an industrial-scale solar plant being operated in Fluvana. No water contamination. The soil will be easily be put back in farmland in twenty years. No water plumes under the, the ground that could cause a problem, no problem at all. If that's the case, there should be no reason the landowner and solar company would object to signing a guarantee such as this. So we feel the landowner partnering with a solar company for large-scale solar plant should be added to a list of responsible parties and be required to sign a personal guarantee. Under no circumstances should a solar developer or a landowner be reluctant to sign this guarantee given the promises of no harm. It only makes good business sense for all parties. And we ask that you please consider that as well. Thank you again for your time that you've devoted to this. I appreciate it as a citizen of Fluvana.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Harry Kingery. I'm a project manager with CEP Solar, working on the White Oak Solar Project. Uh, I live at eighteen oh nine South Cliff Road. Uh, first, I just want to thank the solar committee members that worked really hard on this ordinance under a tight timeline to get it where it is. I think y'all are in a great place. It's been a couple of speakers since we talked about setbacks, so I wanted to bring it back up. But much of what I had prepared has already been covered, so I'll do my best to just hit on some things that, uh, uh, new topics. So I did circulate an analysis of specifically White Oak, uh, with the existing setbacks. And there was some reference to kind of generic squares, uh, uh, properties and, and the effect of those. And that's, that's helpful, but it's also helpful to know a real-world scenario. So with the uh, language as written, and we actually did three hundred-foot setbacks from perennial streams, not five hundred feet, we would be able to use about twenty-five percent of the property. So just a data point there, um, with the, you know, an existing property. So the current language requires, I guess, five hundred feet. Uh, it's helpful to think of that as a stream going right through the middle of the property. So you've got a thousand feet total, just three football fields. It's not usable property. And as you um, discussed tonight, I just want to bring back up the, what is the purpose of these setbacks? They are primarily for riparian protection areas. So it's to help protect the water quality of the streams, rivers, wetlands, of all the water resources. And as was mentioned earlier, they are uh, there to protect wild, wildlife habitat, uh, prevent erosion, stabilize the stream banks, filter out pollutants, bunch of good stuff. So with that use in mind, as you consider the five hundred feet presented to you uh, tonight and, and discuss change, it's helpful to look at precedents and you know, setbacks for RPA areas are, I think, a little bit less subjective than property lines. It's more based on the science, based on uh, best management practices. And a couple of precedents I want to bring up. One has already been mentioned, that the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act legislation passed to uh, improve water quality in the bay requires a hundred feet. You don't have to go far for other precedents. In Fluvana's own code, the RPA requirement for major residential subdivisions varies from fifty to a hundred feet. So that's, you know, seventy-five feet for perennial streams, a hundred feet for rivers. So these are precedents that are already in place, and I think they, they should be part of the conversation um, as you discuss. Uh, and I think they're sufficient for solar, given the elevated requirements in the erosion sediment control section. We heard a little bit about that. You have some rules explicitly stated, and then there's an intent to pull in specific best management practices from this white paper. Uh, again, that was released earlier this year, so it's kind of the latest and greatest. Last thing I'll say is, um, yeah, when you discuss setbacks this evening, think about the precedents in, in the CBPA and Fluv- Fluvana's own code. And then kind of a bigger picture topic, uh, when you're, when you're thinking about statewide energy use, data centers and kind of like as macro as you can go. Solar is not the only solution. Um, and I'm, I'm a developer and I'm saying that, uh, we're not going to cover the state in solar panels to try to power these data centers. But it's an important part of the solution. So rather than thinking black or white, yes or no on solar, just consider it as a, a piece of the puzzle to meet our future energy needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Josephus Allmond. My address is forty-two Partridge Berry Lane, Troy, Virginia, two-two-nine-seven-four. Moved here with my mom and fiance about a year ago. Um, do just want to give my appreciation to y'all for working hard on this ordinance and also apologize that I haven't been there over July. Um, I saw the dates in July were the sixteenth and the nineteenth, and uh, that week my boss was on vacation in Mexico and I was filing two sets of testimonies and a brief on Friday. So I was pretty busy that week. But um, it seems like y'all have been doing a lot of great work and working at this really intentionally, um, which I commend you for. I don't want to belabor the points that, that many have made so far, but I think uh, under the current proposal, the setbacks are unworkable for, for reasons that folks have already described. Um, I would also like to point out, um, the, the growing sort of interest in agrivoltage. Um, had farmer himself talk about his own operations today. I had the privilege of going to the Farm Bureau's President's Council Meeting in early August to talk to them about agrivoltage and the potential. Um, so I'm worried that uh, rules like this might sort of stifle those good projects that can preserve the agricultural quality of, of the land. I would say, um, I heard a note earlier about a preference for brownfields projects. Um, there are already a couple preferences at the state level, actually. So, um, there's something called the Brownfield and Coal Mine Renewable Energy Grant Fund and Program. And that was set up in twenty-twenty-one, uh, actually on a unanimous vote. Um, and it provides a five hundred dollar per kilowatt incentive for projects on coal mines and a hundred dollar per kilowatt incentive for projects on brownfields. Haven't gotten any funding for it, but have been working hard at it. Um, there's also incentives for brownfields, uh, in the shared solar laws, which are for the smaller projects. Um, and so the Department of Energy right now actually is doing a sort of comment period to uh, inform incentives that it could provide for agrivoltage projects or projects on brownfields. So I think the state is, is trying to steer projects to those directions. Um, and, and I'll just say, um, when I'm, when I got to Virginia back in twenty-twenty, I think we were number five in terms of states with the highest number of total installed solar. Um, we've dropped to nine since then. California and New York are higher than us on that list. But here are the other states. Texas, Florida. I can make for the lights. I think the automatic.
Yeah.
I hope they send shut off.
I hope so too, because it's cold in here. That looks like it. That's right.
Well, it's just, it's just these lights and the air conditioning. Everything else is working. So mood lighting.
Uh, I think I was saying we've, we've dropped to number nine in states, uh, in terms of total installed solar. Of course, California and New York are ahead of us, but I didn't want to read off the other states. Texas, Florida, North Carolina, Arizona, Nevada, and Georgia. Uh, this isn't a red or a blue issue. This is a business opportunity, an economic development opportunity. Um, and I'm worried that we would uh, close our doors to it here in Fluvana. Um, so just ask that you reconsider the setbacks, consider lowering them down to a level that can allow some more development to happen. Um, but other than that, it seems like the, the regs have been really thoughtfully developed. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please come forward. State your name and address. You'll be limited five minutes.
Stephanie Chmello, I'm at five-four-eight Stage Junction Road, Columbia, two-three oh-three-eight. Um, I moved here about seven years ago, and the first thing I did was put in a sixteen-panel array and haven't paid for power much in those years. I've and so I've researched it thoroughly, and I would never put anything on my property if I thought it was harmful. So just to know, and I'm a retired um, accountant and financial analyst. And so I've worked for many companies and the only thing I, the, the biggest concern I have that hasn't been brought up before is that um, if you set it, set your standards so high that companies will determine that Fluvana is not solar-friendly, they will take their money and their assets and their investment elsewhere. And it would be very hard to come back from that. So that's all I want you to consider is this is a great opportunity right now, but it may not be here indefinitely. And that's, that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you. And, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kat Campbell. I live in Fork Union. Um,
State your name and address, please.
Kat Campbell, five-six-three-oh, James Madison Highway, Fork Union. Um, y'all have done a phenomenal job. I'm very proud of what our county is trying to uphold and trying to um, stand by. I think that you guys have set beautiful guidelines that will help keep our rural county rural and looking beautiful and maintaining that um, characteristic. I think that another thing that's important is there are ninety-five counties in Virginia. So if any of the people in here that aren't from here, don't like the, the guidelines that y'all set, there's ninety-four others that you can go to. And so I think that y'all upholding what you want to have as the guidelines for any solar that comes here, if they uphold them, then that's wonderful. I don't think we sell our souls to the devil and all the tax benefits of it are going to be for new school buses. We don't have to, we don't have to generate income that way. We don't have to fall for this kind of stuff. And so I very much appreciate what y'all are doing and trying to uphold what Fluvana County stands for, which is rural beauty and upholding the agricultural land and the farmland. And so stick with it. I know you're gonna get a lot of pressure from the people who want to make money off our county, who aren't from here. Stick with it. I'm very proud of all of you. I think that you're doing a really good job. And like I said, ninety-four other counties have options so that they can go there. Thank you.
Good evening. I think everyone knows me. My name is Nadine Armstrong. I live at two-nine-seven-nine Bremo Road, Bremo, Bluff, Virginia. I am a resident of West Bottom. And uh, I've been up here so many times. I think I live here, but um, I agree, you guys have done a wonderful job and uh, I'm proud of you as well. I am a little surprised at some of the things that I've learned today, because I didn't even know we were having another meeting today in reference to this, but um, the one thing that I must say is that we have a beautiful county. And I would like to continue to see it stay that way. I know we have to continue to make new advances in order to improve the county. As for solar paneling, there are a lot of pros. There are a lot of negatives. The main thing is doing your research and knowing exactly what needs to be done and how to do it. I don't know if you have done this, but I would make this one suggestion. If you haven't done it, please do. When you have the time, get in your cars and take a drive through the county. And I mean, the full- through the county, and I mean the full county, not just fifteen, not just six. Go on some of the side roads and really witness the county. Look at the areas. Look at the scenery. Also, take a look at where solar panel can be placed while you're doing this. Some of the areas that would be convenient for the solar panel. And although you've heard a lot about positives about solar panel, please do your research. Because most of what you're hearing is what they have learned in just the last few years. I don't think anyone that has talked so far about solar panel can really tell you the full benefits or negativities about it, because it hasn't been here in Fluvana that long. And a lot of the places where it has been, there hasn't been that much research on. I have been to some states where I've seen it, and I have learned a lot about the solar panel and the pros and negatives about it, and I'm not going to go through that again tonight. But I do want you to do your research and really find out for yourselves what it is really about. Don't just listen to people that say, well, I know that it's going to be this way, or I know it's going to do that. I've done the studies. Do the studies for yourself. And that's the only way you can really say I know what solar panel can do. Okay? Because I mean, if if you really go by everything that someone tells you, I got a bridge in Brooklyn, and I would willing to sell it at anyone that want to buy it. You want to buy it, Mike?
I don't think I want to go be in Brooklyn.
You don't think so? But seriously, you know, like I say, solar panel is something that I am against. I don't mind saying I'm against it. I'm not saying that I wouldn't want it here in the county. But I do not like solar panel. And I think I've expressed on more than one occasion's why. But like I say, do your research for yourself. That way you'll know for yourself. And you don't have to listen to what someone else says. Thank you. Have a pleasant evening. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please come forward this time. State your name and address. You'll be limited to five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward.
You guys, you've heard me many times. I'm not going to say a lot. I just want to say one thing.
State your name and address.
I'm going to tell you my name and address. Don't get nervous. My name is Martha McAlune. I live at fifty-six Pine Lane, Fork Union, Virginia. I came here to live in the country. I came here to look at the beautiful farmlands. I came here to look at the little houses that are built on these tiny little places. I came here to watch the crops go grow. I did not come here to worry about what is going to happen to my neighbor or what is going to happen down the street that is going to be not farming. I did not come here to battle destruction of our farmlands. And I, this is just worrying me to death. So what if every other county is is making money on it? Let them make money on it. But but we will be the victors at the end, because solar is not going to be around that long, I don't think. And if it is, then we will learn to adapt to it. We don't have to be first out of the gate. We have to be thoughtful and make the right decision, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please come forward, state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. No one else coming forward will end the public hearing at this time and open it up a discussion for the planning commission. There's been a lot of uh talk about data centers. Uh, in my research, it says that the demand for uh electricity because of data centers will increase by one-third by about uh twenty thirty, which that is uh a lot. They talked about brownouts and stuff like that, so just thought I would mention that since everybody's been talking about data centers.
And one quick clarification, battery storage is now allowed under this ordinance, which is what they do to their audience because that would.
I wonder how many of those vast data centers have really absorbed.
I don't have. The only thing I see, I like the ordinances that y'all have really worked on a lot, and I want to thank the people from our uh planning commission that worked on this. I do see some problems with the setbacks and uh if you look at some of the maps and people have been sending us, uh if you look at what we've already got, where some of them would be not allowed at all, you know, so we may need to take a look at the setbacks.
Yes, sir.
Could you bring up the one that has the signage?
I mean, the slide with the signage? Yeah, give me just a second, sir. There we go.
So the way I read that even emergency information, so it says emergency information at each access point. So you can interpret that as being, you know, on the fence, advocates going in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but you uh no signage will be allowed on fencing structures or buildings. So there's code requirements on the the well, I'll back up. So when you talk about the solar panels, the solar panels themselves are are generating the current that goes to inverters that goes to the transformers and and that that type of, so there's signage that's required on the inverters and transformers just uh and then when you you talk about the solar panels, there's no way that that you you're ever going to shut those off unless you can cover the solar solar panel itself. There's no switch that you go throw the switch and the panel itself is not energized. So it's the inverters and the transformers that are energized. And that's why the signage is required there, and that's where the script shut off switches are usually put for these larger scale solars. Uh, so when when you look at that from an emergency standpoint, uh and then the code requirements, uh we kind of seems like that that verbiage is in in contrast to this.
So there's language in the ordinance that says any signage required by state or federal law or regulation shall be exempt from this section. So I think that kind of covers your concern.
And and then the the last thing, uh at least in in talking to some people, the uh fifty, was it fifty-four hundred acres is the three percent?
Kenny, why were correct, yeah.
Could there be an unintended consequence that 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 becomes a target that we want to hit? And as the people try to hit that target, things are rushed and then there's there's problems with, you know, pushing projects through and uh arguments that that arise going down the road that, well, you're not at your fifty-four hundred acres yet, why are you denying?
So I will say um zoning caps are more um you can't entirely restrict zoning. So it's more than a tenth of my question board that we want to restrict it to fifty-four hundred acres. And you get to fifty-four hundred acres. And um this hasn't been tested, to my knowledge, in Virginia courts, but zoning in general, you can't have a a hard cap. So from talking to my other colleagues and other localities that have the cap, it's more just than ten. It's not something they can really be. You can't just, once you get to fifty-four hundred acres, you can't say this product is automatically not allowed because we've had fifty-four hundred acres. It's more just ten ten of the board.
Because on the land use law, would that not become a taking if we if we did that?
It hadn't been tested yet, and of course, I know, but that's the concern of local government attorneys is that just outright denying it because of fifty acreage probably may not hold up in court.
Can we just take that off period, even the three percent? We just delete it?
You could. I mean, that's um less restrictive, so you could just delete that entire section, or you can leave the language about the one percent. Increase the whole section or just the three percent portion?
The three percent portion on down.
Yeah, and I think the other thing, the concern of you know, a lot of these type of projects get pushed into one certain part. And uh and I'm not talking about just solar. I'm I'm talking about, you know, if you can look, go back, look through history, where where, you know, there are industrial revolution, where was a lot of things pushed? A lot of things were pushed in in the neighborhoods that were not expected to bite back. And uh we've got to be cognizant of that going forward, even even with this, even with solar.
If you go back up the screen, um, we're saying one percent in each election district. You're still putting on majority of it in the two areas that involve the the transmission lines. Columbia and Fork Union.
You you forced them to.
Yeah, you're still putting there. So what's the point of putting any of this in here if majority of it's still going and it's not being shared equally landwise, acreage wise? I guess that's what I'm seeing after seeing this acreage by district. And we get the Riva district, eighteen acres. Wow, and then you're looking at Fork Union, seven hundred and eighteen acres and Columbia, six hundred and sixty-four acres. I mean, I don't see where there's equally proportion throughout the county. It's just small districts, but I don't.
I brought up, if I recall, I brought up the one percent thing um because my concern was, as Mr. Longmasino has articulated, Ms. Johnson Morgan, you have articulated uh at times that um you're seeing this put and concentrated in certain areas of the county. And so my concern um as the you know, Fork Union representative on the board was that if we establish a three percent, again, if we were to establish a three percent, that conceivably, all three of that, so whatever that acreage is total, uh could conceivably be all in one area. Um, and that you wouldn't have any equitable or more equitable distribution of the projects of the panels throughout other districts. I I know that Riva is pretty much a uh a de facto non-conversation here. Um, but it it was my concern that if and again, I I think I could, you know, uh this isn't my meeting, I don't have a vote, but I, as far as the three percent, I see both ways. If you enumerate it, are you setting a target? Um, if you don't enumerate it, are you um are are you kind of saying that you don't mind if it's endless? Um, if it's there, I would fight strong to keep the one percent thing, because I do think that that protects my area um as far as making sure that it's not all concentrated in that area. I I I don't know. And again, I don't have to make a decision on that tonight, but you know, the three percent thing is, again, you can argue it both ways, I think.
I think that's true, and I personally, also representing Fork Union and also the person who has been almost a broken record on the issue of environmental justice, do not want to see the removal of the one percent limit her because we know that the push would be towards where those transmission lines in the absence of that kind of disproportionate, building on prior disproportionality and consideration. So I would very much recommend that we keep to the three percent and keep to the limits of one percent her understanding that um Red Ana is the outlier in that. Some other issues I'd like to respond to. I do think, as Mr. Bibb has said, that we have created an unintended consequences I indicated earlier with respect to the five hundred feet from streams and ponds.
Well, before we go there, can we finish the percentage thing? Because we're kind of jumping. Um, I guess what I was getting at is instead of three percent of the entire county, that's a lot. Maybe that should be one percent of the entire county, and then one percent of that. Um, I don't know. I'm just thinking, when I'm looking at that total, you know, I agree with you and Mike, you know, a bigger portion of the solar is going to go in Fork Union and Columbia, which is Columbia is my bitch. Uh, but Fork Union is my home. Um. And maybe, I don't know, I'm just looking at this, maybe three percent of the total county acreage should be less.
I think we should keep the percentages like they are on both plant cases, and I think uh Ms. Kilpatrick should be able to allow to finish her conversation. Uh.
Well, I started first, so that's why I'm I'm mentioning that. It was about, I started the conversation about the percentage, and we never came to a consensus.
We could always come back to things like that, but we have you know, we have to have, let other people speak also.
Okay, I was talking about, I wanted to talk about the um setback from the streams. I think that it was not our intention. It is an unintended consequence. It kind of boggles common sense, and we need to look at it again. Uh, when we have federal standards, state standards, uh the the whole Chesapeake Bay area to look at conservation easements, which are our prime uh property to pass along for the future um and much more than five hundred feet. On the other hand, I do have to say, we were quite intentional about a thousand feet from our primary, our three rivers. They're defining for this, for this uh for this county. They are uh natural and economic resources for tourism, for recreation, et cetera. We view them as kind of entrust uh and our seed corn for the future for economic growth through tourism. So that was intentional. Is a thousand feet perf- perfect? I don't know, but it was intentional. And I want to be clear about that. I was confused by the latest comments about taxing taxing. There is no intention to tax greater on solar taxing in the Commonwealth comes from a constitutional requirement to state constitutional requirement to tax on the basis of fair market value. So the market will determine what the tax is on land that goes into S one. It's not a rent um sort of punitive thing to raise taxes. Um. I wondered if we know, do we have brownfields in the county?
We do.
Landfield.
I do.
Yeah.
And landfill and the Dominion property, right?
Good ones. But I do think we and finally, and then I'll be quiet, I do think as we go forward uh tonight, we need to make a couple of adjustments, particularly with respect to the streams and ponds. I think as we go forward, it is important to show the level of the range that we as a group, as a group discussed when we met last. Um, and just an important briefing point going forward to the board supervisors, which will ultimately have to make the decision. I regret that we didn't have Mr. Sweeney's comments earlier, because I thought that they were really good. I'm not sure process wise, without delaying all of this. And as you know, I've been an advocate for getting on with having ordinances in place. But you made, he made some very good points. I wish we'd have them to consider. Um, and I have a question regarding the bus. To Mr. Whitman, uh I think what you suggested is we have wiggle room to bring some setbacks down, but we cannot begin to is this what I'm understanding to edit this document?
Right, you can be less restrictive. So you can decrease the setbacks, but you can't be any more restrictive without having another. And we do have the deadline that the board set, that we have to give a recommendation by September twentieth to the board, so we don't have time really for another public hearing.
In S one, it would have to, it also has to have a special use program.
Correct, correct.
So with these in place, if we wanted to put additional conditions that can go into If we wanted to put additional conditions that can go into the. Conditions of the special use program, am I correct?
Correct. You have conditions in the sitting agreement and then the S U B.
So if if we find going forward, then you know, we, let's say, we make a decision tonight to recommend to the board. To reduce some of this stuff. And then. We find that we shouldn't have, we can, we can also control that by especially using.
Were you, when you were referencing Mr. Sweeney, when you're talking about his comments regarding brownfields?
Um, I can't see all I wrote down. Let's say turn on my cell phone line.
The, the, the ordinance itself makes no reference to brownfields, Dan, correct?
It doesn't. It is not.
And if you had something proposed for a brownfield hypothetically. Um, you could, the board could be less restrictive on what you set based on the special use permit at that site.
I mean, I could add something in the statement of. About brownfields. And it, you know, wouldn't be. More restrictive. We just want to add a general statement about. Um, you know, that we want to. We'd like to see development so looking on brownfields.
Yeah, but my question is. My right question is, is, is if you. Want to see it there and would 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 want to guide it there. Wouldn't you, how would you be? Potentially, you know, but biggest concerns with some of these buffers and things like that that we've discussed are are concerned for. You know, taking up land or or having it in certain areas, but if we had a, taking up farmland, things like that, if we had it on a brownfield where those concerns probably were less. Relevant, would there be an avenue to be less restrictive there for a site such as that? To help accomplish that goal potentially to drive there.
I mean, you could have a separate section for brownfields or you could have it in the S U P, you have separate conditions for brownfield. Because the board can weigh the requirements.
Be accomplished, okay.
Big conditions.
Those must have been brownfields already.
Uh, I believe. Of the landfill is and believe the Dominion plant is. To these, um. For these supplemental regulations, it's still.
In the island versus. I'm just trying to, do we need to add it to the S month? It's already somehow in the island.
These supplemental regulations are for I one and for S one. It's for the use itself.
So we can add an intent clause without republishing regarding brownfields?
So like, looking at the intense section, we have one, number six says. Encourage, encourage the location of utility scale solar near existing utility scale solar. You could have another section below that, like encourage the location of new. A utility scale solar generation facilities on. Brownfields. You have something like that. It's not really more restrictive. You're just encouraging. The development on brownfields.
Well, that's a note I can pick up for our meeting and y'all, or y'all can have a discussion on whether you want to add that and send it to us. I would argue that if there's three of you, it'd be nice to have that footnote in there before it gets to us.
Sure. And I think similar. An encouraging note. About. Rooftop and parking lots would be. If we don't have.
Rooftop is by right, if it's if it serves them, building itself, we don't regulate.
Great. Um, the other point Mr. Sweeney made. That resonated with me is ensuring that the vegetative buffer. Functions year round.
So that'd be more restrictive, so that would. I mean, but we did say. Let me go back to the vegetation section. For the new vegetative buffer, we require the triple row of conifers, which is year round. Uh, but for existing. Don't think it's sitting here around. If we did add year round language, then. Um, that would be more restrictive. Except for the new vegetable screening, trees had to be eight feet in height, town of planning. Had to be a combination of evergreen and deciduous and triple staggered rows placed ten feet apart. So you would have the conifers that. Would be there year round. And the barb option, it had to be a four to six foot barb. And then you'd have the. Landscape on top of the barb.
Well, like I said, I think we should lower some of the setbacks, especially on the ponds and streams. Because if you look at the maps that have been given to us, it would be. Not able at all, like a couple of the ones we've already done. Would be. Almost nothing.
Well, I guess in our meetings, I guess I can say something now. I guess in our meetings. Um, you're looking at people who had ponds on their personal properties. That lead to. A river. Or a lake or something, how we protect those farms. And I hate to keep using Ms. Booker here. As an example, but she does have a pond on her property. That leads to a river. And how do we protect that? I have reached out, you know, I've said this once before and I'm going to say this again. I have reached out to people in this community. Who falls under these categories, who are, you know, very concerned about their ponds, their rivers in these setbacks. I don't know if anybody else here has reached out to anybody. I know I have, not just in my district, but the entire county. And especially in areas where these solar farms are going to potentially go and. These, the, the community is very adamant about these buffers. Because they don't want them around them or affecting their land. And I think we need to consider those people's thoughts. And opinions because it's their land too. It's not just the farmer's lands, it's their land too. So we got to protect both. And we keep going down and down and down on these. Setbacks. I mean, we're back to where we were at the beginning. I I just disagree. I just, like I said, I just think we all as planning commissioners need to reach outside of our comfort zone. And go and talk to these people in various parts of the counties to see how they feel about these things. Before we start making all these decisions. Because nobody is going around talking. You might talk to people in your area, but go all around the county of Nevada. And see what people want in the entire county, not just our districts.
Well, I'm going to say I appreciate public input. And value that input. But at the same time. We need to be guided, and I'm speaking particularly about the streams. And ponds issue. By the science. That. That's all. Uh, in pretty significant ways. How deep a riparian buffer should be. To protect that resource from sedimentation, from runoff. Provide filtering, natural filtering. And provide, uh, ensure water quality. And. What I heard tonight. What I've. Heard in connection with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. Is we're going five. Times what, what fourth states signed onto. As a, uh, an adequate riparian buffer. That concerns me, um. And I think I I hear you on this theme to people. But we also should kind of listen to the science on this question.
Well, I like to see the science. I'm hearing it, but I haven't really seen it. Um, if science is out there, it should be made available to us and we should know where to go find it. And I have to sit there and search, search, search. So there's science out there. I agree with you one hundred percent. Uh, right now, I'm not hearing from those people. I'm hearing from the developers saying what the science is. So. Is it true? I don't know. I mean, as a developer, I'm going to come in here and I'm going to try to sell my product the best way I can. And I'm going to quote A, B, C, D, E, F, G. But where is the written documentation?
So one of the ways that they help control is by labeling that as an impervious surface. So DEQ regulations, you have to figure out how to have to put in stormwater management. Facilities to prevent the contamination of nearby waters. Now. Yeah, we can, we can sit here and argue the effectiveness of that. There, there, there is. DEQ is affected by how much their budget is. On how much they can follow up on stuff like that. And that, that would be, you know, a avenue to look at. But when, when you, when you're looking at the new regulations. As they're written, it's supposed to control that run. And they, the developers responsible for having that plan and that's part of the point, they can do the site plan and. I don't know. It's important to be have someone on staff that actually looks at the stormwater management processes.
Well, if you're talking about the plans, we do have staff that review those.
You continue to come back to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. Again, I don't know the science, but I have some level of trust. In a multi-state process. That dealt with. The massive watershed. That is. Part of the Chesapeake Bay. And went farther than the states, much farther than our county. And came up with a hundred. As an adequate buffer against pretty aggressive. Standards to clean up and restore the bay. So that seems to me to be some pretty compelling. You know. Backup. For looking again at streams and ponds.
I think the one speaker's comment about floodplain. Is definitely something. That it, but it'd be more restrictive, so. But. If, if we were to allow it to be built in a floodplain. All this stormwater management goes out. If, if, if it gets flooded.
I myself like, I think that the pond and stream things need to be reduced. And if you looked at any of the maps that we've seen. And so forth like that, if you look at the one that Mr. Wood brought, with the two sites that there already. Uh, what it would entail. We do have a lot more, uh, streams in the county than we think that we have. And so forth like that. I'd like to see us go down to that, like the Chesapeake Bay people have suggested. I've had a lot of meetings with other people and so forth like that. In fact, last Thursday, I went to a meeting. About solar with one of the board supervisors people too. And so forth like that, and. The person I met with probably wouldn't agree with me on this. But I'm just looking at it from a total. Look at, uh, of the whole thing. But I think y'all did a wonderful job on that, on the thing. As committee members.
So I guess are we back at? Just trying to remember where we are now. We've, um. Do, I mean, ultimately, the decision is going to be on the board's advice. We're just making recommendations so we can sit here and go back and forth all night long with recommendations. Ultimately, it's going to go back to the board's supervisor. Do we send this forward to them for them to? Look at it, make adjustments and bring it back to us? Or? I guess we'll have a choice by now, right?
We have to make recommendations.
Yeah, so I'm back to, so do we send it on as is and see what they say and come back or? Do we send it to them with a few modifications?
That's your decision.
Or?
My, the only thing I would suggest is that if, if. If you go less restrictive on things tonight. And the board ultimately decides that they want to be slightly more or significantly more restrictive, then they're going to have to then repost a public hearing. And so I don't know if there's a way to articulate what these key points were to the board. I mean, that's obviously something I could do, but I. I think it would be nice to have something in the presentation of there was strong consideration of this. This is why. Um, and, you know, I know we had two members of the, of the board that were on the solar committee, and I'm sure these same conversations happen in there. And my only concern would just be bogging the process down even more. If ultimately the board's going to make, make the decision they're going to make and then. We end up wanting to be more restrictive. And I'm not saying we're going to be, but in the event that we are. Then you repost a public hearing and you come back and, and that way, you know, that would be my only suggestion there. As far as to your question about, do we do as is? Uh, Dan, I guess could, could kind of do what he did tonight and say, there was some ranges here on some things and this is what the discussion was. My only concern with that though is that you are putting on the record that the ultimate approval. Was this, so I don't know if there's a way to put in asterisks and say, but for.
I mean, you would say this is the recommended ordinance when you're presenting it to the board and you say. A range was discussed. So if you want to. Talk, discuss a range, if you, I know I heard from Mr. Yeah, a hundred, a hundred foot. It was still Patrick said a hundred foot, so I mean, I can present that. Um, like two members of the commission suggested a hundred foot. But in that, it's been part of the discussion, my presenting it to the board.
Does anyone else have any comments about the setbacks on the, uh? Uh, ponds and perennial streams? Because of the fact that we do have so many perennial streams in the county.
I do think it's important to look at it. It was not. The visual impact. Alone. Is arresting. I think it was an unintended consequence. And, uh, if it's possible to move that only. To some kind of consensus vote, whatever. And reduce it to something that does make. Realistic sense. And then the rest, as I've requested, we should. We should in the presentation to the board. Present the ranges that were discussed. If that's possible.
I can present the map as well.
That would be helpful.
And that was helpful. And it looked like an image like brain. It's amazing how many interconnecting streams there were all over.
And I would hope that similarly, on the other side, very much similarly. That we could marker for the board's consideration, those comments we received. That, uh, particularly those good common sense comments from Mr. Sweeney, that would improve. Um, what we have done. But don't really have the opportunity to go, uh, to take an underkick at the cap with this thing.
I, I definitely personally feel that as planning commissioners. We have an obligation to make a recommendation. And I can get behind. The recommendation that includes what Mr. Wood said he can say.
Luckily, luckily, two of the members of the board at least.
Is it appropriate to vote on this? The point about ponds and streams?
Well, it's part of the motion. I mean, you can make that part of the motion if you. Want it to be. You know, less restrictive, that can be part of the motion. So it's really up to whoever makes the decision.
Mr. Good does have a good point there. If, if we set it at a hundred, but the board gets to a point where they think one fifty is better. They can't do that.
Even if they.
It won't come back to the planning commission, they would just say that.
So we can reduce it down to. I'm just. Right, so we can reduce it down to, I'm just, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, whatever, and if the board comes back and said, no, we want to keep it at five hundreds, we want to move it up.
They don't think, you'll need your hand out of your.
But if we keep it as it is and give them the option to weigh in between five hundred, one hundred and five hundred, we don't have to have a fuck with it. Correct.
A second.
Yeah, so that's, yes, that's why I was getting that, we, and leave it there, and then let them decide what it should be, and then we don't have to have a second.
Well, we're just making the recommendation, so, but our recommendation becomes part of the record, where they could, if we recommend a hundred or whatever, they can't keep that five hundred, because that's what they're actually voting on.
If it's in your motion, you want to change that to a hundred feet, I would be changing the ordinance, and the ordinance is going to go to the board. So they kind of make that more restricted once that ordinance is advertised.
Can your motion include something like strong consideration and discussion of that particular line item, so that that's read into the record?
Sure, I mean, that could be part of the motion, we asked the board to look at the riparian buffer and consider, um, a less restrictive riparian buffer.
But that wouldn't make it less restrictive, so that you would have to, uh, go on, I think probably would.
Just be general and say it less restricted, and say same certain number.
Knowing Ms. Kilpatrick, I think, well enough, I, I think what she's looking for here is something on, like, written into the record of we want you to strongly look at this.
Right.
Yes.
And specific to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and the hundred feet that was adopted as the matrix for this massive watershed.
As Tony O'Brien would say, it sounds like you got a motion.
But can we do the same thing where there's three percent, since we're doing the five hundred feet? I'm going to go back to no more than three percent of the total county.
Now, that one, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, we would only, we, there's only been conversation of being less restrictive on that, so we could always come down and eliminate if that, if we wanted to.
We can eliminate, yeah. Because that'd be less, we eliminate that restriction.
Okay.
Bring a motion up so we can. Okay.
It's weird.
Do I have a motion, uh, concerning this matter, C T A twenty four oh four? Uh, anyone like to make a motion?
I will try. Oh, I probably want to jump in at this hour of the night. I mentioned the planning commission recommends approval of C T A twenty four oh four and ordinance to amend and amending the code of the County of Flum, Arizona, Virginia by amending sub, sub, section of twenty two dash two S one enacting subsection twenty two dash three dash one through twenty two dash three dash five point four and enacting subsection or section twenty two dash twenty eight dash one through twenty two twenty eight dash twenty five to create a solar zoning district and to add supplemental regulations for utility scale solar generation facilities. Okay, here's where I need a little words of the further or comma. Uh, we recommend that, um, consideration of reducing the setback requirement for ponds and streams to one hundred feet consistent with the, uh, uh, findings, um, in practice in connection with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act endorsed by multiple states.
And?
And one.
Three percent. And to look at the three percent part of the.
Oh, sorry. Yes, and to consider carefully the three percent, um, limitation.
All right, can I ask a question? I'm sorry. We didn't really vote on a hundred feet that you put in the motion, no, but you put that in the motion. Didn't we say a rank?
Okay, on advice, that's what we did.
But we didn't vote on it, we had two members say a hundred feet, the rest of us didn't say a word.
Yeah, first we need a second, then you can have a discussion, you have a discussion before you have a second.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kilpatrick, as stated, um, do I have a second? I do not have a second. Do I have any other further notes?
Okay, we try.
Do we have a discussion first before a motion?
No, because it wasn't.
I thought we agreed on giving it a range to not giving it a specific number.
That's what I thought.
But that's a staffing issue for, that was guidance I was trying to convey as the presentation is taken forward.
But by giving that number of a hundred, we pretty much said it to the board, whereas they needed to change, they had to, to go back to a public hearing.
Right.
What's your number?
Only hundred feet.
Second, and then ask for discussion and get Dan to tell you his legal interpretation.
I moved that the planning commission recommends approval of C T A twenty four colon oh four and ordinance to amend and reordain the code of the County of Flum, Virginia by amending twenty two dash two dash one enacting twenty two dash three dash one to twenty two dash three dash five point four and at, and enacting twenty two dash twenty eight dash one to twenty two dash twenty eight dash twenty five to create a solar zoning district and to add supplemental regulations for utility scale solar generation facilities and further recommend, further review of the, the, the three percent and the riparian buffer.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Okay.
I have a motion by Mr. LaVinceno, I have a second by Ms. Kilpatrick, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This approved five soon.
Y'all get buzzing.
You know?
Hey, you got to close the meeting now.
Oh.
I reckon that's a good idea.
Those, those chairs from the Cunningham district really like to run long meetings.
Good, right, and the second of two public comment section, anyone wishing to come forward to speak on any item in the county, please come forward, state your name and address, you'll be limited to five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll be ending the second public comment section, you'll have a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. LaVinceno and Mr. Shifter Booth, uh, we're now adjourned.
My stomach thuds.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, call me tomorrow.
I don't know who that was, that ended up there, I don't know where, was that your?
So this is also the last, uh.